Morning Heavenly Father, we come here to praise and thank you for the glory of your creation. We thank you for the beautiful sunrise today. We thank you for the waterways that hold all the wonderful fish. We thank you for the trees and their beauty. They house the birds that sing your praise all day long, every day. We thank you in memory of the nine eleven first responders. We ask your blessing on all of them and on all of our first responders. These people run to danger as we are running away to protect us. We thank you for what they do every day of the week, even those right here in Orange, Texas. We ask your abundant blessing on all of them and their families, and we ask you to protect them on a daily basis. Thank you, Lord, for this meeting. Be in our hearts and minds and help us make decisions that will please you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenna. We will now move to item three, motion. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article 8.1200 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, have been met in relation to all minutes impending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey. Okay, motion passes. Onto item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments aren't appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, there are no names on my sheet, but is there anyone who would like to address the council? Please come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, thank you. Thanks for letting me be here and address you. My name is Becky Greer and I live at forty-eight eighty-eight White Oak Road in Orange. I was born in Orange, raised in Orange, and lived here all fifty-three years except for nine in Houston, where I got my education and came back. And I'm glad to not have to wear a mask because where I work every day, I still have to wear a ninety-five and did endure a lot of the COVID problems because I work in the nursing home industry and rehabilitation. I'm blessed to know many of your citizens. I come here because I have twofold concerns about, first of all, my street. I feel like we have been overlooked, we're highly taxed. On White Oak Road, we were annexed in the seventies. And therefore, because of that, we were basically grandfathered in and do not have to have services full as other citizens that are in the city limits. We are blessed to now have, we've had fire hydrants and there are some of our newer residents that do have water, but most of us have already put the expense in for our water wells, which mine was in excess of seven grand and a sewer system about seven grand as well, and maintain that. Our, so my, the thing that's most important, because I don't have a lot of time, is the road had been promised that we would have it done properly. For whatever reason, seven, at least several years ago, they didn't have that money. I talked to Mike Merkentel in your road department, super nice guy, has always, you know, given me up-to-date information and has confirmed that we were, again, left out of the budget. We were supposed to be getting it this year properly done. And when I say properly, you know, they just put the tar and the rock last time, and it was a quick fix, I think the county did several years ago. And it's just buckling and we have only maybe thirty residents on our street, if you count everyone at the end and all the way down my road, but we are all in a group chat, we're all really close, tight-knit neighbors. And, you know, we constantly are dealing with issues with our cars going alignment, our tire, you know, it's just sad and we all pay very enormous taxes. On average, I pay close to eight thousand and some of the other residents even higher than that. So collectively, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand probably in taxes. So I, and I know we're not curb and gutter and that may never be the case. I get that because we didn't have a developer come in. We're okay with that, we like being rural. We have donkeys on our road, you know, set off in their, in their homes and we like that, but we don't like being comped and that's the one thing with OCAD. Very nice people, but every year that they come back, they say, "In the beginning, we were comped with curb and gutter neighborhoods, not fair." Now, we've had the issue with, because interest rates went down, people are jumping on homes, buying them even more than appraisal. So then you're dealing with some of the, whoops, does that mean? Is anyone going to offer me their three minutes? No?
You can, you can finish.
Thank you. I know, I had other people scheduled to be here, but we do work and I have patients that are actually being put off so that I can go see them, but thank you. So I'm just concerned, I want to know, I heard that there was maybe monies left in the budget, that even if it can't be done this year, because I know there was a lot of more, what was it, six hundred something thousand more in revenue, that we can, give us the word that our road will be done. Construction down the road from us, I understand they, they may get alley pain done and I'm thinking, wait, they just had theirs redone. Ours looks horrible. I would bring pictures, but I don't have the way to connect all that, but you can drive down our road and it's not nice to know that we spend that much money and all we get is our ditches mowed once a year if I remind them and, and that's it. So it's frustrating, I just want our road redone. I'm also very concerned about drainage. I know that I heard the figure of fifty-nine, was it percent maybe of our counting, was flooded and then our street had never flooded ever before and then flooded again in Omelda. I was one of three, I think, on my road that were fortunate, we were built up high enough. Just coincidentally, I'd put, we'd put a hundred loads of dirt, didn't foresee all of that. But we also really think that the dredging should be reconsidered and I didn't know if any of you knew about this study from nineteen ninety-four that I came across about that we haven't dredged Adams Bio since nineteen fifty-nine. I know I've met a couple of the drainage district people and we looked out there on cleaning up better and doing some dredging. I know Calbio keeps theirs done. I know Woodlands had to do that to theirs. I know a lot of other cities and counties and I'm not really sure why we stopped. Even if it's a small stretch to where we could dredge, because all of Morrisville does drain into us, so many of the houses and residents in Orange County drain into us. And if you walk the properties and would look at all the trees that are still down and you know there's so much silt if there's been that much since the fifty-nine, I just don't want to see the heartache again from flooding. So first and foremost, the road, I would love to have that in the budget to where it's done properly, like many of the other roads are being done and drainage to be looked at. I really would appreciate y'all taking a look at the nineteen ninety-four study because it did say you either dredge or don't recommend any further development. I would not have built on my road and spent the money I spent on my home had I been told that we were not really to be developing down my road because we were in a bad area. And so I'm not sure if any of you were even, you know, even around at that time, but I would just advise, because it was a study the City of Orange actually paid to have done. And, you know, I know things have changed and I know that there's a lot of science in topography and I get flooding is very complicated. I don't admit to understand all of the situations with that, but I do know that just building a ditch here and there in Adams Bio that just drains into it, when it doesn't even drain, doesn't make sense.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, I appreciate you giving me the extra time.
Thank you, okay. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council?
Yes, my name is Carol Scott-Sullivan-Coburn here in Orange, Texas. And I'm coming again. I thank everyone for what they are doing in the city, but there's still a problem with some of the houses. Now, I feel that if I've been complaining on a house, no one has lived in it for at least five years, snakes, rodents, and everything coming over, it's destroying the value of my property. I feel like in all this time, something could be done. I have pictures of the place. At one time, they told them to come and cut the grass. They have cut the front of the grass, slung that over to my yard, did nothing to the back. That looks like a forest back there. It's just aggravating to see nothing is being done. I realize there's a certain procedure that you have to go through different things, but I think that has pretty much worn out with the house next door to me. And another issue, on the side where the city easement is, that they have that wastewater line running. They have it running on the side, but due to the breaks in the line, it has caused it to sink in. That's taken the dirt off my property, the dirt off the other property, and it's making one giant hole. I can't keep filling that dirt in and it's steady just fading on out because when it goes to the back where that gully is trying to come in at, that's when it just comes right back in the yard. What is, they have a manhole back there. All that wastewater coming from that manhole, yes, you can go out there and chlorinate it, but still, it's coming in, as it come in, it dips on down and that's going to steadily eat out the backyard. I'm asking that someone please look at, like I said, I have at least five, five to nine pictures with me right now showing the issues that I'm talking about, but that house on the side of me, it's not like anyone can even consider coming, moving in that. That house was tore down before Hurricane Harvey. It's in worse shape now and I feel like something should be done about it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay, we will move on and we have to skip item six to item seven, consent agenda. Item seven A, August ninth, two thousand twenty-two, Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes. August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, special call, city council meeting minutes. August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, regular city council meeting minutes. And August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, special call, city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
And a motion from Mr. Childs, a second from Mr. Burge. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey. Okay, motion passes, item eight B.
Mayor from A. We skipped over city announcements and we did have an employee we wanted to introduce to everybody.
Okay. City staff announcements, Mr. Knopf.
Yes, I'm very pleased to introduce Amanda Dupree, who is our newest code enforcement officer and she is a former paralegal and we are very excited to have her with us.
Okay, congratulations, welcome. Happy to have you.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Knopf. Okay, city staff announcements and city events, any events?
No, sir.
No, sir, okay. So I apologize for that, I was, just missed the number, okay. Onto item eight, first reading, consider an ordinance amending the adopted budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-one, and ending on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, in accordance with the charter of the City of Orange, Texas. Ms. Zito.
Yes, mayor, so this is our final set of amendments for this fiscal year's budgets. On page twenty-eighth are totals per fund. Page twenty-nine and thirty-one is the summary of the amendments. Most of the amendments are to enroll the projects forward from prior years, projects that weren't completed. It's kind of a housekeeping thing for our system. Noteworthy, I did want to point out that we do have an amendment meaning it comes from reserves because, for fuel. Gas prices went up and we didn't have enough money budgeted for fuel. So we budgeted, our amendment was seventy thousand for that. And we did have a change order on the West Side Water Extension Project of forty thousand that had to come out of reserves in the Water and Sewer Department. So those are the main amendments. Everything else primarily was moving projects forward, line item changes and that sort of thing. You have any questions?
Just a quick question on, the lady spoke earlier of the six hundred thousand. The one, I thought we had a hundred and fifty-three, hundred and fifty-one thousand that was generated from, could you remind me of that, what that was about?
Which one are you talking about?
On the tax revenues that she spoke that said it was six hundred and thirty-something thousand that would be added to our revenue and?
From prior year, that's correct, but that doesn't mean, but we incorporated that into our budget.
Right.
And then what you're speaking of, we, we did have more revenues than expenses, is that what you're talking about? Well, then we had, we added the half a percent of COLA, so we've used most of that.
Okay, of that, of the other one hundred and fifty thousand, okay.
But this one is for this year, this is just amendments for this year. You're talking about next year.
Yes, ma'am. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, item eight B. Consider an ordinance adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-two, and ending on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, in accordance with the charter of the City of Orange, Texas, which requires a record vote, Ms. Zito.
Yes, so this is this upcoming fiscal year, twenty twenty-three budget, and we have included the half a percent increase in the COLA, so now it'd be a total of three percent. The, the ordinance before you does have the, the new budget figures. Did anybody have any other questions about the budget? We pretty much discussed it, but these numbers do include the increased COLA.
Okay. All right, do we have any questions from council, from Ms. Zito? Okay, if we don't have any questions, do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
And I say aye as well, so a unanimous vote, thank you. Okay, onto item eight C. Consider an ordinance making a tax levy and fixing the maintenance and operations tax rate, debt service tax rate, and total tax rate for the City of Orange, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October first and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, upon all taxable property in the City of Orange, Texas on January first, two thousand twenty-two, according to the laws of Texas, the charter provisions, and the ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, and providing that the said taxes levy shall be collected. Make the following motion if it's approved, okay? So the following motion, which you all would read there, so if someone makes a motion, you have to read it as such.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and then you have to read it as the way that it's stated in the item eight C.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point seven eight three zero zero, which is effectively a seven point five, seven percent increase in tax rate.
Okay, and this requires a record vote, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Once again, for those that are here, that when you read the way that it has to be written according to Texas legislature, I want to once again reiterate, as we have stated before, if a house last year in the City of Orange was, let's say, estimated at a hundred and fifty thousand, our tax rate for last year was point eight zero five nine, okay? This year, houses are costing, we went from one fifty to two hundred. Even though our tax rate was point eight zero five nine, we are dropping it to point seven eight three zero zero. So we're lowering our tax rate. We are not raising your tax rate. However, because your house appraises for more by someone other than the city, we did not appraise your house. You will end up paying an additional seven point five percent, seven increase than what you did last year because of the appraisal that has been done on your home. That is not, that is, that has not been put on you by the City of Orange, Texas, okay? Thank you, Ms. Zito. Item eight D, first reading, consider an ordinance amending certain portions of Appendix A as the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas pertaining to garbage and trash collection services, Ms. Zito.
Yes, the city sanitation rates are based on waste management rates that they charge the city. We just pass them on. Waste Management has a contract that allows them annual cost adjustment every year based on the CPI index. So, and a fuel surcharge if diesel goes over three dollars a gallon, which it has. So Waste Management came to us and they were originally asking for fourteen point eight three percent increase. We, we have a new rep, you know, Terry Woodson retired. So we had a new rep and we talked to her and she negotiated with management, Waste Management, and they got it down to ten. So that's the best they would do for us this year. It's a one-year contract, we have one year left on our contract. And so we all have a ten percent increase. And so we have to increase our rates to the citizens. So currently, you pay a residential one clerk twenty-seven twenty-four, it's going to go to twenty-nine eighty-four, so about two dollars and sixty cents per clerk beginning October one.
Okay, do we have a motion? Or any questions from Ms. Zito?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Henigan, a second. Second from Mr. Burge, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, onto item eight E. Consider an ordinance amending certain portions of Appendix A, Section eleven point one zero zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas pertaining to utility service rates and charges, Ms. Zito.
Yep, so this ordinance is for the water rates. And last year, we discussed that the Water and Sewer Department is trying to repair our aging infrastructure and council approved or talked about a plan and it was increasing our water and sewer rates over four years. So last year it was three percent, this year is three percent. For the next two years, it'll be two percent. So this amendment, this ordinance will increase the water rates for three percent. And we also went through the ordinance and adjusted some of the fees because the fees haven't been adjusted for over ten years, I believe. It's been a long time. So some of those, I'm going to just point them out, just real quick, there's not that many. For its, for comparison, though, the water, if you have just a residential five-eighths meter, it was eleven twenty-four for your first thousand gallons, it'll be eleven fifty-seven now, thirty-three cents. So, and then it'll be that after every thousand gallons. And so fees, we have connection fees. So if you come, you've got to build a new house and you need to connect to the city, it takes our guys to go and put a tap in and put the, everything in there. Labor's increased, materials increased, so we are increasing our tap fees. The basic five-H line from, was three hundred dollars to five hundred dollars. We did a comparison with all the other cities, so we'll be more in line with other cities. And so now it will cover our cost because we were kind of, the cities, the Water and Sewer Department's been losing money on those types of taps and connection charges. Let's see, the street breakage charge, if we have to break the, you know, break the street and go under it or whatever to get your tap, it was four fifty, we're going to go to seven fifty because those, all the costs have increased. Let's see, an installation charge, just to start a new service was fifteen dollars, we're going to go to twenty-five dollars. A return check fee was twenty-five dollars, we're going to go to thirty, just a little bit more. Bank's charging us more, we need to pass on our charges. The late fee was only five dollars, we're going to go to ten. It helps cover our costs for sending out late notices and the postage and, and all the extra steps that our clerks have to go through for late fees. Deposits, we are going up on our deposit, twenty-five dollars. It was one twenty-five, they'll go to one fifty. However, there was an ordinance prior that said we would keep your deposit forever till you cut off service. Well, now we are going to revisit that and we want to refund your deposit after three years if you have a good credit history. So no longer will the city keep your deposit forever, we will return it after three years with a good pay history. That's about all the changes in the water fees. You have any questions on those?
Okay, any questions from council? I would like to say thank you for bringing that information out to the public. It's one of the things that we hear about, it's one of those things that, it's not that any other council has ever neglected, it's just that over time, as, as the decades have went through for the city, we are the ones that are dealing with the labor and trying to figure out how to make it happen. So thank you for sharing that information, the details, and, and thank you to Mr. Ingram behind you because I have had, seen a lot of pipes that have had to be replaced and we appreciate everything that we're doing. It's not that we're crying because we're the ones that are stuck with it, however, it just happens that way, so. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Okay, item, so we need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, item eight F. Consider an ordinance amending certain portions of Appendix A, Section eleven point two zero zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas pertaining to utility service rates and charges.
So this is for the sewer side, this is for the sewer rates. The same three percent increase, we applied it to our sewer rates. What was fourteen dollars and twelve cents will now be fifteen, uh, fourteen dollars and fifty-four cents, forty-two cents. So minimal increase on our sewer rates. And don't forget, if you have a winter average, which most people do after a year, you are, your sewer rates are capped anyway, so you might not feel that effect at all, perhaps. And we did change some fees for sewer also. The tap for a fee, for, I mean, for sewer went from two seventy-five to four fifty, again, to cover cost of labor and materials. On number, let's see, I think it's four, three, three D, there was a, there was a typo in that section. Just wanted to point out, if you could approve, when you approve this of ordinance, you could just say to, with changes, the street, that's addressing the street breakage charge, it was left off and it'll be seven fifty. Let's see, it also talks about the service fee to connect was ten dollars, now it's twenty-five dollars. That's about it for sewer.
Okay, so when I read, now I need to read this again and say with changes, then and how, what else with?
Is that right, Trish?
Yeah, and how much the change it was?
Seven fifty?
Yeah, it's seven fifty.
Okay, all right, so let's go back to this one and it is eight?
F.
F, okay. So consider an ordinance amending certain portions of Appendix A, Section eleven point two zero zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas pertaining to utility service rates and changes with changes of seven fifty. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, item eight G. Consider an ordinance amending certain portions of Appendix A, Section eleven point three zero zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas pertaining to utility service rates and charges, Ms. Zito.
So this ordinance just addresses a couple of fees. I don't know why it's separate from the others, but it is. It's the late fee, which I already told you was going from five dollars to ten dollars, and the cutoff fee, we're going to go from twenty dollars to forty dollars. We're hoping that'll deter some of the cutoffs because cutoffs are very expensive for the city to do. Not, it's, not only do the ladies and the clerks have to pull the list together and get all that information, the guys have to go out physically and turn it off and then they have to go back and turn it back on. So we're increasing that fee and hopefully deter some of that. And so that's the only thing on this ordinance, those two items.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey. Okay, motion passes, item, thank you, Ms. Zito. Item eight H. Consider an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Orange, Texas declining to approve the changes in rates requested in Entergy Texas Incorporated's Statement of Intent filed with the city on September first, two thousand twenty-two, and finding and determining that the meeting at which this ordinance was considered was open to the public and in accordance with Texas law. Mr. Coons?
Mayor, council, again, this is one of those things that go before the Lawton Law Firm on behalf of the city and the other coalitions of cities and the Lawton Law Firm has recommended that we decline the approval of the rates.
Okay, we have any questions or comments for Mr. Coons? Okay, do we have any motion, a motion to decline?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey. Okay, motion passes and thank you for bringing that up. This is one of those things where I've seen on social media where other cities, other cities who don't operate under a municipality or other areas outside of a municipality, they don't have someone to take up for them in this instance. And so Energy is able to change their, their rates. People have said they've seen their bill go up eighty to a hundred dollars per month. But with us serving as a municipality, we are able to decline those rates. But with us serving as a municipality, we are able to decline those rates and continue to use T M L to fight those, so definitely wanna support the citizens, because we pay my bills too. All right. Onto item ten A. Consider a motion, oh, sorry. Item nine A. Consider a resolution awarding a contract to M K Constructors in an amount not to exceed one million three hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars for bid number two thousand twenty-two dash forty-three, Greenway Park Drainage Improvements with American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. Mr. Ingram?
Mayor, council, roughly two years ago, Mr. Wolf commissioned engineering drainage study for the Meeks area and that Greenway Park. Through Arsenal, Wisconsin, they decided that concrete lining this ditch would remove about seventy to eighty percent of the water out of the streets during flood events. And based on all that, I would recommend that we do move forward with this.
Okay. Any questions or comments? This will definitely be an asset to the community. I know it helped, um, in the international neighborhood, Oak Creek neighborhood as well, so definitely looking forward to this. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion in action. Item ten A. Consider a motion electing an individual for each place, places six through nine, to serve on the Board of Trustees for the Texas Municipal League and the Governmental Risk Pool. Mr. Coons?
Mayor, council, um, we were notified again by the risk pool that they're, you know, we need to, uh, vote on some, some board members. Uh, we did a little research on the folks that they proposed, and, uh, in your package is the, uh, the folks that we recommend. I'll, I'll be honest, I don't personally know any of them, so if y'all know any of them, wanna amend those recommendations, you're welcome to do it. But that's, that's our recommendation and we're sticking to it.
Just one second. Takes us a long time to scroll all the way down again, I'm sorry. Okay, so we'll just, so you have already given us?
Right.
Names to support?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, if you see on my memo, you know, the, the four names.
Yeah, I don't see anyone that I actually know to, to other go against this, so I'll just support your recommendation.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to support the recommendation of the city manager?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Coons. And we'll move on to item ten B. Consider a motion reappointing Denise Ladette to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Knopf?
Yes, Ms. Ladette's term on the Planning and Zoning Commission expires today, and, uh, she is eligible to be reappointed if the council so desires.
Mayor Spears, I'd like to make a recommendation for this spot. Becky Westmoreland has put her application in. Um, I know her personally and have worked well with her. She has a master's degree, um, has worked as an educational diagnostician, which requires her to analyze the law and then provide services for, for children. So she's very good at looking at what the law is, looking at everything that affects it and making decisions. I think it makes her especially talented for planning and zoning.
Okay. Okay, so we have a, a motion to appoint? Do we have to, uh, what do we need to do when we have that? Got to get application from that person as well?
She's already turned in.
We have, we see an app- application for her, or from her.
So what do we need to do now if we have a motion to appoint someone?
Yes, go ahead.
So comfortable doing that today? Put a different person's name?
Okay.
If we have a second?
Okay, we have a second? Okay, we have a first and a second. Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
We, uh, we, we have a, uh, we had a recommendation to appoint someone that's, has applied for it, and it was Ms. Becky Westmoreland, good lady. Okay? I know, it's okay, I know you're sick today, it's okay, bud. Thank you for being here, though. Item ten C. Consider a motion reappointing Michael Henigan to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Knopf?
Uh, Mr. Henigan's, uh, term on the Planning and Zoning Commission expires today, and he is eligible to be reappointed if he should desire.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Um, will you need to excuse yourself as a conflict?
I will, sure, yes.
My motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second? We have a recusing, recusal from Ms. Henigan? Okay, so Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, and I will say aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Knopf. Item ten C. Consider a motion, I'm sorry, ten D. Consider a motion reappointing Jamie Wilson to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Knopf?
Uh, Ms. Wilson's term also expires today, and she is eligible to be reappointed if the council should desire.
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knopf. Item ten E. Consider a motion reappointing Robert V. Hill to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Knopf?
Uh, Mr. V. Hill's term expires today also, and he is eligible to be reappointed if he should so desire.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knopf. Item ten F. Consider a motion to approve action taken by the Orange E D C concerning an E D C incentive with take five oil change, thirty-one twenty-two North Sixteenth Street, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three zero for eligible infrastructure improvements in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand for the purpose of economic development. Mr. Trahan?
Yes, sir, so mayor and council, I'd like to call your attention to this rendering that is to your right. Uh, this is what is considered project number three at the Chick-fil-A Starbucks site that will be going in. Uh, the fiscal address has been designated as thirty-one twenty-two North Sixteenth Street. And just a few comments, the proposed capital investment is one point nine million dollars. Uh, two hundred thousand dollars is what has been approved by the E D C Board of Directors as an E D C incentive that will help offset development costs, targeting concrete work, paving, curb, and building foundation. So subject to your approval, it will move forward in terms of the next steps of the, uh, public approval process, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. So I'll turn it back over to you, mayor.
Okay, we have any questions for Mr. Trahan? Okay, if not, we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay?
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Trahan, and excited to see another business coming to the City of Orange. Okay, item ten G. Consider a motion to adopt the Orange Economic Development Corporation's annual budget for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Ms. Zito?
Yes, mayor, this is the E D C budget that we, uh, presented earlier at the E D C board meeting. We just need the council to formally adopt it.
Any questions or comments? No, we have a motion?
Second.
Second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes. At this time, we have a recess in our meeting of the Orange City Council. The recessed regular meeting of the City of Orange Council to convene a meeting of the City of Orange Employee Benefits Trust to approve selection for medical insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance, and life insurance for all city employees. We will, um, reconvene the meeting when it is time, but at this time, we will ask that you step outside? No, they get to stay? Making sure, okay. I didn't wanna get in trouble. Okay, so we'll re- uh, reconvene, we convene this, go ahead.
So you've gotta read the motion, call them in the door.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so convene meeting of City of Orange Employee Benefits Trust. Item twelve A, call the meeting to order. I now call this meeting to order. Consider a motion acknowledging receipt of and authorizing Mayor Spears to sign the City of Orange Employee Benefit Perspective Premium, Projecture Renewal in the Benefit Program Application from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas for the period of October first, two thousand twenty-two to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Ms. Zito?
Yes, so this motion is just to acknowledge that we received the renewal and to authorize you to sign the application to get the new plan. Um, the overall increase was only five point two percent, so we were very happy with that.
Okay. Okay, any questions or comments from Ms. Zito on this item? Okay, if not, we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes. Item twelve C. Consider a motion approving employee medical insurance renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield at three thousand, oh, three million, two hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars annual premium for a period of one year. Ms. Zito?
Yes, so this is the amount, uh, annual amount estimated for the Blue Cross policy. Um, like, it, the renewal started at eighteen percent, and our, if y'all remember, we have consultants, McGriff and Siebel's, that come in and they help us negotiate, they got it down to five point two. They did an excellent job this year, so we're thrilled with our, uh, increase. We wish it was zero, but five point two in these days is really good. So we feel like that's reasonable, we'd like to renew.
Yeah, that's a very good, from eighteen to five point two.
Yeah.
That's a very great job. So do we have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes. Item twelve D. Consider a motion renewing employee dental insurance with MetLife for a period of one year at a nine percent increase in rates. Ms. Zito?
Yeah, so our dental did, is going up nine percent. Last year it was only point four percent, so they're getting us a little bit harder this year, but we still feel that's reasonable in this, um, environment, and we, um, would like for you to approve this renewal.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bailey. Item twelve E. Consider a motion renewing employee vision insurance with MetLife for a period of one year at a zero percent increase rate. Way to go, MetLife.
That's right, so vision is zero, and vision is something that the employees pay for themselves. The city doesn't contribute to vision, so zero percent increase is a win for the city, for the employees.
There you go.
For sure.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, thank you, Ms. Zito. Motion passes. Okay, and last but not least, consider a motion renewing employee life insurance with Cigna Group Insurance for a period of one year at an eight percent increase in rates. Ms. Zito?
Yeah, so our life insurance did go up eight percent, but last year we had zero increase, so I think they're just catching up also, and we recommend that we go with this renewal.
Okay. Do you have a question or a comment from Mr. Ms. Zito?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item twelve G, adjourn meeting of the City of Orange Employee Benefits Trust. So I will adjourn that meeting, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Oh.
For that part of the meeting, right?
Yes, you're right, go.
Okay, so we have a, a motion from Mr. Burge, a second from Mr. Childs. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, now we will reconvene the meeting of the regular City of Orange City Council. Okay, and go to item thirteen A. Consider a motion authorizing the monthly transfer of funds from the City of Orange to the City of Orange Employee Benefits Trust to pay for employee-related benefits. Ms. Zito?
Yes, this is our annual authorization to make that monthly transfer. We transfer the money, uh, for the contributions for all, uh, employee-related benefits to the trust and then we pay our premiums out of that trust.
All right, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito, I know we had you up here a lot today, but thank you. Item four, uh, item fourteen, city manager report.
Mayor, council, uh, there's, just a reminder, there will be a special call meeting next Tuesday, September the twentieth at five-thirty here in the chamber. That will be for the second reading to adopt the budget and the tax rate.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, onto city council report, Mr. Burge?
No report.
Okay, Ms. Henigan?
No report.
Ms. McKenna?
Thank you, everybody, for coming, appreciate you being here.
Okay, Mr. Childs?
No report.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Okay, so I do have a report, sorry, I didn't wanna mess up the flow, but here we go. So one of the things I wanted to talk about real quick and I wanted to, um, pay respects to council and staff for the city of Orange because there's a few things that we do and a lot of times we, you see people on social media talking about all the different things that are happening and what's not happening. But there was a few things that I just wanted to relay. Uh, before the end of the year, I have, I have plans to make a State of the City Address to the city where we will, uh, talk about all the things that have happened here. The last two years as mayor, I've asked the council for us to allow staff to finish the things that we've started. We've had a lot of huge projects, a lot of undertakings, which you've all seen, Riverside Pavilion, Lions Den, um, and now the new Red Center, which is about to open up soon. And in those last two years, we as a council have not brought any new projects because we wanted to give staff time to finish the things that we said we wanted to do. We have over ten to thirteen million dollars in work taking place through Mr. Ingram's department. We have all types of several million dollars of things through Mr. Knopf with the tearing down of buildings and, and fixing these dilapidated homes and getting rid of all the, the overgrown issues that we have in the city. And so as we address these, with this year, since we did not ask for more projects, one of the things that we did that I am very happy and proud to say is that this council, working with the city manager and staff, decided to do incentives that in my, then, and from what I know in the one hundred and eighty-six years of us being a city, have never been done before. So I just wanted to go over that real quick as far as in the last three years, this council and staff have worked to give out over eight percent in increases in raises. This year, we just voted to do a three percent increase in raises for the employees. Um, this is only the third time in the last fourteen years that it has been three percent. Um, so some of the incentives for this year that you may have heard about, I just wanted to make sure that it was known by the public, is residency. So if you live in the city of Orange and you work for the city, you will receive fifty dollars per month as an incentive for us to get people to want to be a part of where they actually work. I know that not everybody's going to enjoy that or agree with that, but we're also working to establish a system to where people say, not only do I work for the city, but I live here. And so fifty dollars a month adds up to almost six hundred dollars per year. That will help with gas and other things as well as put that back into our system and help us with taxes and things that we will receive on the other side. Certifications. If you have a certification, you have a degree or anything pertaining to your position, you will now be eligible between one hundred to three hundred dollars per month for each employee to receive based on your trainings and things that you have taking an extra step to learn to benefit our community.